Okay, go.
Welcome back to our community of the whole meeting. We'll open the meeting with our land acknowledgement. The council and the staff of the township of Montague acknowledged that this sacred land on which the township of Montague is now located in this meeting is being held inside a cisterium and ceded territory of the Argon Quinish Shabegash. So the adoption of the agenda, so moved by councillor Abbas and seconded by councillor Crabtree, that the committee of the whole agenda dated October first, twenty twenty four be approved as presented this date. All in favor? Mr. Carrion? First thing on the docket is our deputy clerk, Ms. Francis, talking about, are you gonna talk about the calendar? The calendar is what it is, what it is. So if you, if you look at it, does anything, anything on there that, any questions or concerns or anything of that, does council have at all?
I do just have one quick note. When I created the calendar, the OEMC conference had not been confirmed. I just checked the website. It is September seventeenth to nineteenth at the Ottawa Conference and Event Centre. So I will update that and change it before it gets printed and handed out to you guys. But that would be the only change for right now.
Perfect. The only thing that I had circled was just Good Roads. If there was a chance that a council member was thinking of going to Good Roads, it looks like we have a a meeting on during that time. So I guess that'd be the question is if, do we, would we push it back a week if that was, doesn't mean we should look at anyways? Or if it's just if it happens, it happens?
If you don't have quorum, I would say change it, but is there?
There are multiple people that might know.
Is there multiple people that are planning on going to Good Roads?
I'm tough, that's what I'm thinking.
So I think at that time, we can adjust.
We can make an adjustment if we go into January and February, and we could say we could pump it back then if we were like, do we have enough time to do that?
Because that budget, you guys are gonna have to figure out where, what conferences you're going to, so. Yeah.
Okay, so we'll, the status quo is an hour and then we'll go from there. Sounds good? All right. Any other questions? Seeing none. Moved by councillor Crabtree, seconded by councillor Johnson, that the council approved the twenty twenty five council calendars presented this date, and that any changes if necessary be brought forward to council. All in favor? That's good. Next up, Alison will take the chair, the committee of the whole chair.
Thank you, Chair. So this is a procedural bylaw item, so each year, she's, the procedural bylaw allows for the changing of the chair on a monthly basis. It's very confusing for everyone, so this council has agreed to do it on an annual basis based on alphabetical order. So for the first year, councillor Abbas chose not to be the chair. So Gregory Carroll was the chair for that year and is now serving his year term. So this is basically to bring forward to say is councillor Crabtree interested in taking his term effective December? And then the following year would be councillor Johnson, but we'll bring that next year. So at this time, obviously, the options are in front of council as far as councillor Crabtree appointing it, taking the appointment or not. So it's for council discussion.
What do you want to do?
I'd be honored.
Sounds good. Sounds perfect.
So option one?
There was no other option. Sorry, you're ready to bring it out too, so like it's a.
You have a choice, but you don't.
I'm not changing it now. So moved by councillor Johnson and seconded by Reeve Jennings, that council approved the appointment of councillor Crabtree, the chair position of the committee of the whole for December twenty twenty four to November twenty twenty five term. All in favor? That's good. Next up, we're gonna talk about Mr. Crabtree's favorite thing, the stove at Roseville Hall. I'll take it away, Alison, start it with me.
Thank you, Chair. So this did come up by council that our stove is having issues and it's ten plus years old. There was many discussions about not going to propane because of rentals and the liability of people leaving the gas on and things like that. So to find a thirty-six inch electric stove without the glass top, as some council members said they were, they didn't want, was more difficult than I thought it would be. So in front of you this evening is an option to replace our current commercial grade stove with another commercial grade, keeping in mind that this should last us ten plus years again. So the recommendation is to replace the stove and to move forward. We've had substantial rentals this year over previous years, and we do have additional rental revenue because of those things. And I think we are getting all those additional rentals because of the work that we're doing at Rosedale and the grants and all those things. You can't always get grants for everything. This might be one of those items that we have to purchase. So the recommendation is for us to purchase the commercial grade stove and replace it with the thirty-six inch as opposed to a thirty-inch residential grade stove. And if there's not surplus from twenty twenty four, to use reserves, but I anticipate there to be surplus to, to pay for this, to get this replaced, as I know we do have a couple of events coming up that are gonna require some stove use. So that's the recommendation from staff at this time.
Is it a stove gas stove or is it an electric or something?
It's electric. So it's an electric stove. The liability purposes for the gas is just our insurance will go up substantially with the rentals. So the electric was the better option for, because it's a rental place.
I'm gonna go to councillor Crabtree, everybody.
Um, I do think it's unfortunate that it's far more than we wanted to spend. There was a bunch of options available with the glass top surface. With the glass top surface, if anybody drops anything on it, it's done. But I do think this would be a much needed and necessary upgrade for Rosedale Hall for the fact that we are renting it. We are having used, we're using it for recreation, we're using it for council, we're using it for all of these events. And it is bringing in positive revenue. I think this is a, is a really good option. It does suck that it came over what we, what we're hoping, because I was finding a bunch of options, but then with glass top. But there, there's a lot of problems with glass top. If they shatter it, then we're out of stove again and we're gonna be back to square one, so.
Good.
Sorry, Chair. Okay, sorry, Chair. So again, through our asset management plan and our tangible capital assets, the current stove has outlived its expected life, and it was a commercial grade. So at the time, it was also an expensive stove. So we're really replacing life for life is what we're doing. So it's not like we're coming with the Cadillac. We had a really good commercial stove at the time, and it's just time for it to be replaced. Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think it's a reasonable actually cost for where it is and exactly, exactly what you're saying. It's hit its life and it's, and it's an asset that needs a replacement. It hits its life, the end of its life, and it's something that, I mean, I think I made a comment before that it'd be nice to talk at a, at a bunch of time, but I think we would be going forward a bunch of time anyways. So I, I am, I think, I think it's probably the right move to go with that, so. Seen a lot of nodding aheads too as well, so that's a good sign, so. So we'll just move that by Reeve Jennings and seconded by councillor Abbas. And council approved the purchase of a new electric stove for Roseville Hall. And that further, council will approve the use of five thousand dollars in reserves to fund the replacement of the twenty twenty four surplus from additional revenue use. Will not fund the purchase. All in favor? Next up is our deputy chief, fire chief, Mr. Straight, which I think he's doing his first report to council. I heard me wrong.
No, I think I'm correct.
So no, no pressure, but I think he's, he's done this, this game before up here, so.
You know, it gives you a new appreciation for staff and standing on the other side of the, the green chairs, so that's for sure. So good evening, council, members of the public. Thanks for taking the time to review the report. And as mentioned in the report, the fire department is always looking at ways to increase the levels served to our residents, which is why we're looking at introducing a automated burn permit system for the township. So some of the key points throughout the report, we wanna make sure that everybody understands, it's still an application-based system. So even though you go on the website, doesn't mean that you get an immediate fire permit, so all the permits have to be provided by the chief. Every person gets notified by text, email, or, or automated, every person gets notified or, or can access the system either by, by email or by phone. The system allows us a huge communication advantage, allows us to push notifications, so burn bans, fire prevention messages, and emergency communication notifications. So in the event that there is ever a storm, tornado, ice storm or anything like that, we can send out a message across the permit system, notify all the person, people that have permit in the township that, you know, Roseville Hall is now open, and, you know, you can go there to seek, you know, warm water, food, all those kinds of good things. So some of the good benefits, it has a dedicated webpage that's set up by permitcom for online, for the online application of permit notifications. It allows us to do online mapping of active burning. So we can go on there as administrators and look at where the burns are occurring within the township and make judgment calls on that. It's very easy for us to monitor compliance, so we can go in there and see who has been burning. Lots of times we get calls, we get dispatched by, by some falls to a call, we don't know if the person, they tell us that they have a permit. We're not a hundred percent sure whether they do or whether they don't. We easily access that. It allows the chief to designate no, designate no burn areas throughout the township. So as an example, if we wanted to set up a, a no burn area in the woods subdivision, the fire chief can go in there on the map, identify an area, and then anytime any person goes to apply for permit in that area, it would get denied and wouldn't be allowed. And also do that in areas where there's maybe drought or any other, it's just like that, at any point in time throughout the township. It allows the officers and the dispatch ability to see who's burning when a call comes in for service. So we know that there is, but not only do we know, dispatch knows, and they will notify us and say, listen, just be advised that one four two five, ABC Street, there isn't activated, there is a permit that has been issued, it has been activated, it's just so we attend. So it allows us to, you know, initiate resources to, to see appropriately. It's a points-based system, so the points that we purchase never expire. So we, we said, we buy these points at the, at the, at the onset of this, and we only use them as, as, as they're used, so. And the points number expires, so it's a great, a great thing. And we've also talked to many other municipalities that are currently using it and are very happy with it. The residents like it, and the fire department and the staff, the administrator like it as well. So financially, the initial cost, as, as mentioned in the report, is fifteen thousand dollars. Now, this does allow us for two hundred thousand points to be used. It's a ten credits per year per permit. And it's one credit per in-bail notification and one credit per out-bail notification. So if we say that we have a thousand permits issued with, throughout the township next year, because we expect that usage will probably go up with the ease of use and everything else, you know, it'll cost us a thousand points to issue a burn ban to the, throughout the township. A hundred thousand points is six thousand dollars. So we can see that the estimated usage right now is roughly around thirty thousand. Again, that's kind of a little bit of a pie in the sky number a little bit, because we don't know what the usage is, and we expect that more people will be on board to, you know, use the internet and sign up for it, so. And then obviously, the goal is to streamline the process for both our residents and our staff, providing better service. We have the four options that are, that are mentioned in the report. Option one, that council accepts report for information, and the council directs staff to include the financial amount of fifteen thousand on the draft twenty twenty five budget to be funded from the modernization reserves, and that the future budgets will include an operational cost component to continue to purchase credits. Option two, the council accepts the report as information, and the council directs staff to have presentation on the system presented at a later date. And option three, the council accepts the report as information, the council directs staff to look into alternative options. And option four, the council accepts the report as information. Anybody have any questions?
It'd be important to have some, some ability.
I hear the chief getting tired towards, I don't know, he's.
Quick question. So you said you'd be able to push things out, so let's say we sign up for burn bans and all this kind of stuff. That morning, they changed that it's no burns now. You'll get a notification, so won't accidentally fool someone else?
Yeah, absolutely. So everybody, everybody will get a push, so you'll get a text, an email, or a phone notification over your cell phone, or your landline phone, because the permit is activated.
That's excellent, because that's really the, the thing that we miss a lot of times, and you make a phone call or you don't realize, because you haven't left your house, let's say, to look at it. Not that I have done that, but I, anything that makes it easier to know when you can burn, when you can't burn, and when something comes up and the municipality doesn't want you to burn. So I'm all for something like that. I think it's an excellent system to have.
Now, now bear in mind, the, it's, it's only for like big fires, so like not campfires, all that kind of stuff. So if people have campfires, they can just do what they want, everything else, if they don't do what they want, they can, they can have a campfire.
They can cook and fire.
They may not, they may not have that permit to get that, that side of it to.
They still have a permit.
To.
A campfire, for campfires, you still have a permit. You still have to call in that you're burning. So I think that's the reason why with the additional credits and things like that, sorry, sorry. Is that we have a lot of people that call in just for campfires, that they don't need to call, they have to have a permit. You have to have a permit for any kind of burning, but they call in, we have some people almost call in every day, because they're doing campfires or things like that. They don't have to, and that's where we're saying, some of those additional credits might get used up until they get used to the concept that they don't have to call in, that they have a permit going on. We try to put that out to people, but some people just feel more comfortable doing it, so you're still gonna get that happening as well.
So there's a good value side of it too as well with the, for the campfire side, for having the, the permit, not calling it in, but then it can still be blasted out to say like, do not, do not do the fire, do not do the, etc. Councillor Crabtree?
We talked about all the advantages of it, and I see a lot of the advantages. Do you see any disadvantages to this system at all? Like, I, I do see where Alison said we're gonna use a lot of credits until people kind of brought their head around the fact that they don't need to call in for every fire. So.
Yeah, I think, I think until everybody gets on board with how the system activates, how it works and uses it, we're, we're gonna use a few more credits at the, at the front end of it. But I think that once you started offsetting that for staff time and everything else like that, not only that, community safety is a huge portion of this, right? We just sat through a CMC meeting two weeks ago, had a conversation with a lady from Halifax, large fires down there. They weren't, you know, subdivision in the, in the middle, outside of town with trees all around it, and they lost a hundred and fifty-one houses in five hours. You know, so being able to, you know, notify our citizens that there is a burn ban, doing everything that we can to prevent situations or scenarios like that is, is good money in the bank.
Is this something that would just be on the website, or is this something that maybe you would explain to people at a meeting, or how would you book it?
We certainly have an open, an open house meeting if that's, if we feel.
Well, I was just thinking, a lot of people still computerize very well.
So, so on that.
Maybe something like that would, would help. Most of them burn all the time.
Yeah, so, yeah, councillor Abbas, on that note, there is a dedicated webpage that you would be able to access from our webpage. You would click on that, it would open it up. You know, fill out the information from there over the internet. You can also do it over the phone, and you can call in to the office, and our staff here would help to get the permit set up. Then once it's set up in the system, it's just enough to pick up your phone and punch in your number and call in and say you're burning.
Just quickly to, to kind of piggyback on what Alison said. As someone who answers the phone, most of the time, a lot of the people that are calling for a weekend burn just want to get on the list, because they don't know if they're gonna have a burn or not, and they don't know, like, they don't wanna be in trouble because they didn't call us. So this will kind of open up, once they understand and fully, like, know how to use the program well, they won't need to be calling us to get on the list because they're afraid they're gonna be in trouble. If they decide to have a fire, they can have one. They don't need to be calling beforehand presumptiously.
So against Frances's point, then, you know, there's quite a few times over the course of the year that someone calls you on your phone on the Saturday and says, oh, I forgot to call the office, can I burn whatever it is? And the insurance chief, who can attest to that, insurance is bothered every weekend, so.
Any chance?
So that kind of stops any of that from happening, right? And once your permit is approved, then you can go in there, you don't have to notify us. Saturday morning, you decide you wanna burn, you go in there, click the button, it says I'm burning, and all's well, we all know that's burning, and when you're done, click the button, everything's done. And we can definitely, just track where it's at.
So Chair, through you. So for the communication side, it's gonna be similar to what we've been doing with a lot of our items. We'll be putting a full-page notice in the March and the August installment to make sure that both. But I think we would also put in that, that we might have a bit of an open house or availability for people to come in, maybe with their own phones, that if they need help getting the app or getting whatever, that we can assist them to push that out, because this is going to be good for everyone as far as the communication goes, especially with the additional weather events we've been having, that if we can post that out to say, like, like Eena said, that Rosedale's open, or that this road's closed, or that, you know, these types of things because of an emergency, it's all good. So we would, as we have with everything, it would be communication, we would be here to help, we'll have availability to help people out with this and to really run through it. I think it's a good thing long-term. Sometimes it just takes some time for change to take effect, but I think ultimately, this is the way to go. And the reason why we're front-loading the points is a number of reasons. We have the modernization funds, that this is a purpose for them. We may not need to purchase additional points for several years. That'll roll into the operational budget at that time when it does. It's a minimal cost for the ultimate communication and life-saving ability that it has as well. And the cost that it may be deterred from somebody who didn't realize that it went on. Maybe they call in the morning and they start burning, and then we put it on in the afternoon, right? So I think that there's a number of things that, that it can help with, but I think that overall, this council has wanted to move forward in a communication strategy, and this is one step for the fire department in relation to that.
There's a lot of benefits to this, for sure. It's a, and there's, like, there's a lot of them with that, the safety side of things too as well. It's, I think it's really good. I think, it sounds like council's pretty, pretty sold on.
And I think Grace is, you know, so tech savvy, I think she could do a great online tutorial on YouTube that, that would be very quick and accessible, that you could screen record and, and show how people, how it's done. And that could also be shown out to an open house that would make it very simple for people to follow, because, you know, you wanna fix your car now, what do you do? You go to YouTube and say, how do I fix a, so, you know, it'd be, it'd be great and easy and.
You wanna do your burn permit? Do Grace, that's for me.
You do that to Grace.
We'll, we'll add that to our solution. Great. So moved by councillor Abbas, and seconded by councillor Crabtree. The council received the burner report as for information, and I counsel direct staff to include the financial cost of fifteen thousand dollars on the draft twenty twenty five budget to be funded by the modernization reserve for the initial year, and my taxation for each year additional points are required. All in favor? That's good. Thank you. Deputy Chief?
Great job.
Uh, next up is, Alison's gonna talk about the big hole that's out in front of us, that's in the yard.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. So this is an update to council. We haven't been directed as such, but I think it's, I think it's pretty important for us to bring in regular updates. It'll probably be happening on a monthly basis unless it slows down more than what it has lately in relation to what's going on out there, where we're at with costing and, and what things are looking like in relation to the new fire and public works complex. So since council has approved the award back on August sixth, there's been a lot of action going on to plan, to prepare for the building to come down, and as you can see, the building has come down. So since the approval, we've gotten quotes for the generator. Council awarded it September third for the, the big hundred kilowatt. Public Works has cleared the shop, settled into our spare office in here, and I got a photo of them with the garage on their, the last day with the garage. So I thought that was nice. The water line was successfully installed from the well over to here and disconnected from the public works building where it ran through and then over to here. So that's all been done. We didn't hit any rock doing that, but you'll see in the next one, we hit lots of rock doing the electrical trenching in the back to get the electrical, so we changed the sixty amp panel to a hundred amp panel and ran electrical over to the salt shed, the red building for now, temporary for them for the winter, and got that all set up and established. So that's been completed. We did have to rent a ho ram to do that work, and one of the operators was lucky enough to sit in that for three days and hammer that away, so you see the picture there. So the new storage, the TARP building, has been ordered. It's expected to arrive late October, early November. So we'll be preparing the pad for that, to have that installed for public works to have the trucks in over the winter. The demo permit was submitted. The building is gone. A financial update is attached, so at that time, council had approved us to take on some of the responsibilities to reduce the costs. So that is attached on where we're at with, with that budgeted amount as well. So the contractor in that time has, we've had an initial, an initial site meeting. Electrical service was removed from the public works building and temporary power has been installed for the contractors. The fencing's gone up, signage. We've provided colors for the building, the pumping of the old septic tank and separator, and all of that's gone. There's been a few change orders accordingly to any kind of big project like this. So we've changed the alternate siding walls, so basically for a savings of a hundred and fourteen thousand and change. Now, we're adding to the project, the cistern that's gonna be on, on the property. We're adding a standpipe for fire to be able to pull, like a dot dry hydrant if they need to. So we're trying to, you know, two birds, one stone type of situation there. Hardware for the doors, so basically, seems simple, but all the knobs and lock and closures and fobs or whatever. So we've changed some of those, and we anticipate some savings, because we reduced some of the fob access and things like that that we didn't require. And then just the pumping of the old septic tank should be minimal. So this is kind of just an overall update of what's going on. Since I wrote my report, there's been more going on out there, but nothing of any major as far as financial concern, and things are moving along. They plan on starting to date for the foundation late next week, like pending. So the responsibilities worksheet, so we're either on budget or, or under budget for most of the items. We're sitting in a good position. The generator was substantially under budget. The, we already have booked the contractor to take down the white building in the spring to make sure we're not holding up any kind of civil work in relation to the building and the landscaping and all the work that needs to be done. All the temporary power or our power that's now feeding the salt sheds, all done, and all the plumbing and raps and everything. So everything's in there as far as costing, so we're so far sitting in a, in a very good financial position.
Thank you, Ally. Opened up for councillor.
I just wanted to thank Ally and the staff, because it's great for us as councillors to be updated every day of the month. We don't, we can see some of the sites that's going on. There's a lot there that we, we don't know. So I really like that report, when you get it updated once in a while, so I just like to thank her for that.
Councillor Abbas?
Just the change order, like, presentation, just so you can see those kind of things, what the financial aspect is, so I appreciate it.
So Chair, through you. So is this something the council would like us to continue to bring back, just so everyone's on the same page?
I, I think it's great now with the council, the transparency to other people, so they can see what's going on and how the money's been spent and over saved.
Agreed? Everybody agree? Good. So if we agree to that too as well, is that operator still vibrating from the? So kudos, kudos to that. Seeing none, I agree too as well. I think this is, this is great. It's great to keep the update, and we're, and we're moving, and we're keeping moving in the right direction, which is fantastic, so. Moved by councillor Crabtree and seconded by councillor Johnson, that council accepts the public works and fire complex update report as information. All in favor? And that's great. And we're gonna stick with a little bit of fire stuff too as well, to the fire community of the whole, I think. So if we got a little grant that we got that can help out some, some service too as well.
Yeah, so thank you, Chair. So we did apply for Roots Community Fund for two dry hydrants for the fire department. Roots Community Fund is through Trillium Insurance. So we didn't get the grant for the full two dry hydrants. They provided us twelve thousand dollars towards the installation and purchase of one dry hydrant. As in the report, the fire department did bring two areas that would be a good location for dry hydrants, one being Van Exen, the airport road, and one being Virchell. So with the receiving of funds of twelve thousand, the recommendation from the chief was to go with the Virchell Road location. It was a little bit more money than the airport road, but he felt that that was more the location that would better be fitting and suiting to this municipality at this time. So the twelve thousand dollars, we'll partially fund it with an additional eighty-five hundred dollars, which I'm recommending to come from development charges, because it is an up service. We are providing additional service to that end of the municipality by installing a dry hydrant. The recommendation is for us to move forward with this and get it installed. I think this is, again, another good news story for the fire department, for their safety, for ease of pulling water from that end of the municipality. Um, and it is partially funded from a grant, so that's all good news.
Perfect. Any questions from Councilor, uh, Councilor?
So Chief, why did you pick Burchill, what were the thoughts, because there's not much out that way or...
Uh, so, so currently we do use Burchill, which is on a very steep incline off of the side of the road, probably a nine to ten foot drop incline. So we currently use it, which takes a lot of manpower to get hoses up and down out of Burchill. So we thought it would be more acceptable to have a hydrant there. One man could hook up to it and supply water to that end of the community. And one of my other reasons was, we already have one on Code Drive, which is in close proximity to Van, uh, the airport one. So I thought we needed to really probably see one further out in our community to make the best benefit. Burchill I can use for, you know, part of Roger Stevens, I can use it for Boundary and One. I, I currently looked at three, um, you know, we're very successful, as we're aware. We have somebody that gets grants quite on a regular basis and I, if I didn't say she does a great job, I am right now. It's amazing when she gets some grants, you know, so we're very fortunate to have this kind of opportunity. So I, probably next year, we'll be currently looking to put in another dry hydrant. And hopefully at that time, maybe there'll be another grant, you know, available at that time. So if we were successful on the one in Burchill, that would give us Code Drive has a dry hydrant at the current time. McLaughlin, we share one with Beckwith at the current time. We'd be able to draft out of our new building next year. That's not something we're gonna draft a lot of water out of because it's fed off of our well. But if we had a fire at nighttime where we used a hundred gallons, we would top up there. That is not gonna take a lot of resources out of the well. And then we'll currently have on a Burchill, so we'll be looking at four water sources, which I feel, you know, is a great advantage for our residents and our community, so.
Great explanation. I think it's a, it's good enlightenment though for people that don't know, but the one on Code, you know, we share it. I think that's great because it's like, what, what, because I'm sure someone on the other side of the town is going like, what about us over here? And it's, yeah, that's a great explanation to say of, of where they're all situated in the township and, and really spread out, so I think that's really good.
And you know what, to maybe tie it in a little bit with, uh, my deputy's report, but Who's Responding? You know, we can take our dry hydrants now and put them into this Who's Responding. So if I have a, another municipality coming, Beckwith, for say Smith Falls, and they're not sure of that address, they can pull that up on Who's Responding, you know, pin it and know exactly where that dry hydrant is. So, so it really comes in tail with his report and, you know, the placement of the dry hydrants, so.
Great. Any other questions? That was a great explanation to all on the efficiency of that, what we can go and keep moving forward with the fire, that's, that's amazing, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So seeing no more questions, uh, moved by Councilor Johnson and second by Reeve Jennings. The council approves the purchase of installation of a dry hydrant at the Burchill Road location indicated in this report. And the council approves the use of development charges in the amount of eighty-five hundred dollars to fund the project of twenty twenty four surplus is not available, all in favor? And that's good. Well, that was quick, but we, uh, I think we definitely, uh, are moving forward with a bunch of stuff, we got some really good information, so that's fantastic. So on that time, before we adjourn, is there any burning questions from the audience? I see one, yes, Tom.
Um, your dry hydrant, hydrant in Burchill. Uh, have you got a place where you can put it, that you're not putting it in rock?
What the chief has on.
So, so absolutely, we're very fortunate out there, Tom. There is a, a big main water source that, um, I've monitored now since the spring. Uh, I have residents that live out there, I've talked to. Does this viable source stay, have water in the wintertime, which I'm being assured it does? And no, no rock to go through? It's a matter of, they'll drop the hydrant in off the side of the road into, but you'll extend the depth of the hole I need to go into, but no rock at all to go into. They'll bring a bit of fill in over top of the hose and we're good.
Well, my question is where I am, you got six inches of topsoil, you're lucky.
Yeah, fortunately I'm going downhill again.
No rock in mind, you, all right.
Just upside that wall.
Great question. Any other questions at all? Anything burning from online email world or, uh, Mr. Van Mirren?
Yeah, just a comment, you were talking about the stove at Rosedale Hall, do you know how old that stove is there?
I'm afraid to ask.
Twenty years.
Oh, we got twenty years, twenty years out.
So we doubled it, so.
There we go.
Yeah.
Thank you for the history lesson.
That's recorded in my years, that's recorded in my years of service.
Yes.
Yeah, just in reference that a new stove will guarantee that the eggs don't get burned.
That's an operator, that's an operator issue.
That's an operator issue.
I just cracked him.
But, but I, I think the fact that elements will work and I won't have one in a drawer somewhere might, might help.
Mr. Craftree's going to, uh, YouTube how to work the stove. Any other questions or burning things or new news or, I see none, this is good. All right, so, uh, moved by Reeve Jennings and second by Councilor Abbas. The committee of the whole meeting for October first twenty twenty four now be adjourned at seven o'clock on the dot. All in favor? And that is carried, thank everyone, and see you again in the morning.